Good evening. I'd like to call to order the June 19th meeting of the Board of, New Canaan Board of Education. First, we'll review and approve our agenda for this evening. Can I have a moment? And first, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm sorry.
(inaudible)
Thank you. Now, I'll ask for a motion to approve the June, the, meet, the agenda for tonight. Phil, second. You go. All in favor. I'll acknowledge that Brendan Hayes and Erica Shodell are joining us remotely tonight. Next is approval of minutes from the June 5th meeting. We have a motion. Phil, second. Bob, all in favor. It's unanimous. Thank you. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the Board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Is there anyone wishing to address the Board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports and recognition. Tonight, we have one presentation. It's the end-of-year athletics update with Mr. Jay Egan, our athletic director. Welcome, Jay. Almost back in business. Thank you.
Hey. Need to go? Okay, it's, it's my pleasure to be here tonight and talk about our 2023-24 athletic year. I think we really all, I know that we really have a lot, tremendous amount to be, be proud of. But before I get going, I would like to just thank the Board for their continued support of athletics. It's, it's something that is greatly appreciated by all of our coaches and by our athletes, by everyone. And it's something also that I just want to say is not taken for granted. Now, we know that we have tremendous resources and I like to think that we, our coaches and our athletes appreciate them, those resources and use them, you know, as, as best they possibly. So again, we do have a lot to be proud of this year. I'm just gonna highlight, just to start off with a few things here. Our girls tennis team is a Class Double L state champion. So Double L is the largest classification in the state of Connecticut. They beat Greenwich in the final, they beat Darien in the semifinal, they had lost to Darien in the FCAC championship, final set, in the final, uh, final match in the final set, and they were able to come back and, and beat them right here at, at New Canaan High School in the semifinals. And though, so particularly with that group, it was really obvious to me that Serena Platt and Leslie and Lexi McCall, who were our co-captains, really did a lot to keep that team together, the rest of the girls. It was a young team, except for those two, those two seniors. And, and so I think they deserve a lot of credit for them being able to refocus themselves as far as the CIAC championship. And the next picture, the young lady that's standing on top of the podium there is Bella Di Felice. That is the New England championship. She is the champion, New England champion in the discus throw. And she set a school record that day, or better her own school record that day. And what Bella did in the state championship series, she won the FCAC and the CIAC, she won the FCAC championship in the shot put and the discus, she won the class meet, CIAC class meet in the shot put and the discus, she won the state open in the, in the, in the shot put and the discus, and she was the New England champion in the discus, and she was fourth in the shot put. And yesterday, she was named by the Connecticut High School Coaches Association, the female track and, female field athlete of the year in the state of Connecticut. So it was tremendous year for, for her, and I'll have a little more to say about that as we go on. We won the Class L football state championship this year. Those are our seniors. So this group is, it was a very special group, and what I had observed about this group is it wasn't, you know, the most talented group with respect to going on to play in college, but what they allowed themselves, they allowed themselves to be coached. Our, our football coach is Lou Marinelli, is the winningest coach in the history of the state of, state of Connecticut. One thing he's, one of the many things he's great at is finding good coaches and keeping good coaches on the staff. So you put a combination of great coaches and young men that are, allow themselves to be coached, and you have a formula which will, will lead to a lot of success. And just to understate that, I don't, just to underscore that, we didn't throw a touchdown pass this year. We won a state championship, we did not throw a touchdown. So we were great on defense. Our kicker was, he's the, has picked more field goals than anybody in the history of the state. So there's a lot of different ways, and that, that team did it the way I just described, allowing themselves to be coached and really working hard at it. Our boys swim team won their third consecutive Class L champion. So that is a significant accomplishment, any way you look at it. A gentleman in the pool there with his clothes on, his name's Kevin Rush, Kevin is a New Canaan resident. Kevin's daughters swam at New Canaan, swam at Duke, and she was an Olympic qualif, she, she had an Olympic qualifying time. So she was quite an accomplished swimmer. But the thing about Kevin that, the reason I'm mentioning this is Kevin spends his time developing, is most interested in developing novice swimmers, and gets most excited about, you know, putting them in a situation where they can score in these meets. So I think that's really something special about that. The FCAC over the past five or six years has, has given out an FCAC cup, and they, generally, this FCAC cup is sort of like the FedEx Cup, which they, they present in the Division One teams. It's emblematic of overall record in all sports and citizenship and all those things. So we used to have that in the FCAC cup. This year, they decided they wanted to change it. So they went to competitive results. So New Canaan was third this year as far as competitive results in FCAC tournament performance only. So up on the screen there, you can see how those point totals came out. So, you know, I thought I would share that. So I'm, I'm, I feel like a historian when I go into this, but I guess I've been around here long enough so that maybe I am the, the person to share this information. I'll read this so I get it right. "One year after incorporation of this, of this, of New Canaan High School in 1927, before that students attended Stanford and Norwalk High School, New Canaan High School football team was established under the guidance of head coach and New Canaan High School, first New Canaan High School Athletic Director, Lauren Key." So, starting when he, with Mr. Keys as the athletic director, in the past 94 years, there've been four athletic directors at New Canaan High School. So you see those four, or three, three of those people identified there. And I thought that is, it's kind of an interesting, an interesting statistic, and I think, given all that's possible at New Canaan, again, going back to the resources, going back to the interest and enthusiasm that the students have and the support that you get from the community, it's easy to see why people who are interested in athletics and working with young people would want to spend their careers in, in, as a director of athletics in Canaan. These are the up, these are, I've showed these every year. These are the updated total state and New England championship and runners-up won by FCAC teams from the fall of 1961 through the spring, springs through this spring. And we're getting a little tight there with our cousins to the south, but we still, we still have the most number of championships, total, total of championship and runners-up since 1961. Again, you know, that's kind of evidence of why somebody would want to stay in, in the role here, our coach here, or, or be involved in athletic Connecticut. Some highlights of this year. Our girls cross-country team was FCAC runner-up and Class L runner-up. Again, I mentioned our football team was 12-1. I'd just like to talk about our boys soccer for a second. Boys soccer in the FCAC, I, I think, is the most competitive sport. There are more, more teams, there's more competitiveness in boys' soccer, I think, than any sport. And so for years, our boys haven't made the FCAC tournament, haven't made the CIAC tournament, although you watch them week in and week out, they work really, really hard, they're very dedicated. So this year, they were nine and seven, they qualified for the FCAC tournament, qualified for the CIAC tournament, which I think is a noteworthy accomplishment. Now, I asked one of the, we have captains meetings with, with the team, with, during each season, with the captains of the team. And so we were in one of our meetings, and I asked the boys soccer captain, I said, "What, what do you think is different this year about what, you know, from years past?" And he said, "Well, in years past, we used to blame each other for things that didn't go right. This year, we decided that we would take responsibility for what, what we didn't do and try to, try to do it, do it better." So I, I think, you know, this, this whole thing of your leadership and, you know, these, these young men and women that are, that are doing these things on these teams, it's, it's, it's really, it's really special to see. Our girls basketball team was 15-8. Again, that's a program of ours that, you know, hasn't been one of our most, I guess, programs that's won that many games over, over time. They qualified for the FCAC tournament for the first time since 2012, and they won all their home games. So I thought that was something, we already talked about boys swim and dive, talked about girls tennis, girls lacrosse. It's, um, you know, when you watch girls lacrosse in Fairfield County, we, let's put it this way. When you watch Darien and New Canaan play lacrosse, it's not exactly like watching a high school game. I have, you know, you're, you're looking at something that looks different, level of play is different. I was at the championship game last week, and the CIAC officials that were there, when I was walking off the field, couldn't, were amazed at the, just at competitiveness, speed, and the, and the skill level, you know, of the girls. So, and Darien was the number-one ranked team by Nike in the United States this year. Canaan ended up 10th, you know, if we hadn't, maybe if we had another minute or so, we might have won that. So, very high performing on a year-in, year-out basis. I, well, I didn't put boys lacrosse up there because I'm running out of space, but an interesting fact about our boys lacrosse team is they, they beat, in, during the course of the season, they beat the Class M champion in Connecticut, they beat the Class L champion in Connecticut, they beat the FCAC champion, and they beat the New Jersey Class L champion, of course, their season. So it's, it's another team that's really functioning at a high level. Girls outdoor track, FCAC runner-up, and they placed third at the Connecticut State. We had two coaches that were recognized by the FCAC as coaches of excellence, Lou Green, who's our boys soccer coach. I think that goes back to, I'm not the only one that recognized the achievements that our, our, our boys soccer program was able to accomplish here, and Jeff Brenson, who is our girls cross-country coach and a science teacher. I think this is all is important and interesting information, so I, I'd like to make sure that I share it with you every year. This is our, these are our student participation numbers, and this speaks, these are, so it's, it's actually 68 points, 68.8%, but I took the liberty to round it up to 69%. So 69% is the unique athlete number. That means that 891 students at New Canaan High School are participating in athletics. Some of those students choose to participate in, in multiple sports. That is our desired situation. We would like our student, students to be involved. If they're not involved in athletics, they're performing arts, they're doing something in addition to school, just being in school for a normal day. So this is about a 500 athlete difference. So I don't know how many of those 500 are two, doing two sports, how many are doing three, but I, that's a number that we can continue to look at, see if we're tracking with multi-sport athletes, the way we hope that way. I think right now, that's a pretty healthy situation, yeah, as far as. Sport participation, I included, just sort of for your information. Some of our sports, where we have to make cuts, we try to keep as many possible, as many students as we can possibly coach, or some sports even have maximum numbers that you can have on the bench, hockey does. So, you know, our coaches, in conversation, our coaches, we have agreed that we will keep, you know, as many players as we can, as we can coach. There are some sports where you can keep as many players as want to be involved, which is a great thing. But anyway, these are all those numbers, just basically for your, for your. I'd like to mention, talk a little bit about the All-Sport Booster Club. So these are four things I'd just like to highlight that the All-Sport Booster Club does. Again, just as, to refresh your memory, All-Sport Booster Club are a bunch of, of volunteers who are interested in enriching the athletic program, the entire athletic program. So they're not interested in one particular sport. It also provides us with a platform to, to track equity with respect to private funding that comes into the, into the athletic program, which is really, really important. And, you know, I've said this before, it's worth repeating. I have colleagues in surrounding communities that would love to be in the situation that we are in, where we, we have something like this in place so we can ensure, we can feel confident that everyone's having a similar experience, whether you're the most popular sport in town, or whether you're a sport that, you know, is, is not as popular as some. So, these are, these are really volunteers that I have utmost respect for, for the time and effort they spend, which is significant. So this year, the All-Sport Booster Club donated right around $150,000 to pay for additional coaches, on top of what the Board of Education already provides. So that's really the best way to enrich an athletic program is by putting additional adults with kids, and so we feel great about that. I'll talk about streaming for a second. I think this is one of the things that you should know about, and is the thing of the future as far as high school athletics. During COVID, NCTV and Ian Nichols and, we had just a cohort of kids that the circumstances just led them to create some really special programming, and they had enough interest so that we were able to stream whatever games we felt like could be streamed or should be streamed. And so that worked out really well, except for the fact that it really raised the expectations on the part of our fans to a very high level. And so now, we, we find ourselves with, you know, it's sort of, it's like everything else, it's, things cycle in high school. So they don't have quite as much interest now, and they don't have maybe, you know, Ian's at Syracuse and broadcasting right now, now broadcasting their games. And so, so what we've decided to do going forward next year is have a hybrid with respect to how we stream, because we are going, we, we feel like it's important that that's something that we can, we can count on. So we are going to, the Booster Club is going to pay for either six, 60 or 70% of all the field sports home games to be streamed by, by a professional. And what we hope for is that we can plug in students with the professional streaming, and so still keep them involved in that way with this whole process. And then NCTV will be, will be available, you know, lesser burden to them to also stream games and let, let students fulfill their curricular responsibility with respect to streaming. So that was a learning experience for us this year, and so going forward, that's, maybe some of you have heard about, you know, some people were dissatisfied with all the games not being streamed, particularly hockey. So we think we have, we know that we have a solution. The other thing that I, I just, I know I spoke about this before, but it also, I think, bears repeating, is that the summer camp program that the All-Sport Booster Club runs is so mutually beneficial to New Canaan that it's, it's important to understand that we have youth sports camps that are run by our coaches and staffed by our athletes. And, including the world-famous Ben Young All-Sports Camp, which is genius on his part. And so what that allows us to do is allows us to provide a service to the community. It allows the All-Sport Booster Club to create revenue, and it's a retention tool for our talented coaches to allow them to supplement what their coaching salary is. So, you know, we, we think that that's a win-win-win all, all, all the way around. So, that's just one other thing that, that we have, our All-Sport Booster Club is, makes, makes possible. Athlete, athlete and coach recognition. This past October, we had our Hall of Fame there every other year. New Canaan High School has a Hall of Fame, and the All-Sport Booster Club, this past, last summer, took over the responsibility, this was, used to be done by the New Canaan old timers, took over the responsibility of soliciting names from alumni and from the town, vetting those names and coming up with a, a, a group here that we, that we are, that we are gonna honor. Now, I'd just like to go through this. It's a, it's a very interesting thing that happened here that we really didn't plan. So I'm gonna tell you who these people are, and then tell you how they're, what they all have in common, which is, is quite interesting. So on the extreme right is Andy Towers. And Andy was in New Canaan High School, lacrosse player, basketball player, played at Brown, he's the all-time leading scorer at Brown. He's, right now, he was the head coach at the University of, Dart, at Dartmouth University for 10 years, and now he's the head coach of that professional lacrosse, chaos team, professional lacrosse. See, who do we have? We have Boyd Harden. Boyd Harden is a 1981 graduate of, of New Canaan High School. Boyd's two daughters are playing at North Carolina, and Boyd also played at North Carolina, and he was an All-American. Boyd didn't get recruited by North Carolina, so he wanted to go there, and he took himself, got dressed up like we are now, and he went down to see the coach and tried to tell the coach how much he really wanted to go to North Carolina. The coach, after practice, was gonna go for a jog, and Boyd was dressed up like he is there in that picture with suit and jacket. So the coach went off on a jog, and Boyd started running after him, and ran a couple miles with him, explaining to him how important it was gonna be for him to go to North Carolina. So he went to North Carolina, and he was an All-American. Next to him is Frank Pinella. Frank is a player from the 70s, he's in the all-time leading rushing list for, for New Canaan High School. Next to Frank is Emily Stoffer. Emily, let me try to get, Emily was a two-time All-American soccer player at New Canaan, and she won, they won two state championships when she was here. She went to play at Harvard, she was three-time All-Ivy League, and was a finalist for the NCAA Woman of the Year. Diane Murphy, who's next to Emily, was our trainer for 40 years, and she was the first full-time athletic trainer in the state of Connecticut. And Mark Di Felice is a, Felice presently is a police officer, and he's accepting that trophy for his uncle, Denny LaPola, who was on our baseball, football, and basketball team, and in 1951, they won a state championship in baseball, and we didn't win another one until, let me see here, until 2013. I'll come back to him, because there's, and this is, these guys all, believe it or not, they all link together. And that's, next to me is Bo Hickey, and Bo was assistant football coach for us, and tremendous hockey coach, even though he couldn't skate, he was a great hockey coach. Unfortunately, Bo passed away in February, so we, we miss him great. So, Mark, Denny LaPola started youth football in New Canaan behind the police station when he was, he and others in, in the mid-60s. Emily Stoffer's mother started the New Canaan Soccer Association in the early 80s in New Canaan, and Andy Powers' father started the New Canaan Lacrosse Association. So that was, this was an accident that these guys all came together, but it was, it's kind of cool. So we were, we were happy to do that, and we were particularly happy that we could honor Bo, given, you know, given his untimely death. Something that we, the Booster Club started two years ago, I thought you might find interesting, is it's the Ram of the Week, the Booster Initiative for the Ram of the Week. In-season athletes are recognized each week for, for the season by their coach for outstanding performance or other noteworthy contributions to their team. We send an email to the parent to congratulate the parents, as we recognize the students on our website, and at the end of the season, we take, we take a picture, here's the season picture for the spring. This doesn't necess, it's not necessarily seniors, we've honored freshmen, we honored, you know, it's just a way, another way to recognize, you know, young people for the good things that, that, that they do. And I might say that this is really caught on, because they get the T-shirt, and as soon as they get the email, they come to the athletic office to get the T-shirt, and they all show up for the picture. So, you know, we know that it's important to them, which, which we hope that is. This is our National Letter of Intent signing ceremony. So this is for student, this is for Division One student athletes, and they sign, you know, this is that they are going to accept athletic aid and binds them to their school. And this is something, again, that the All-Sport Booster Club is completely responsible for. If you can see in the background, particularly, well, it's Elizabeth Cosco and Megan, Megan Finnegan who are doing this now. They get flags for their schools, so they present them with those flags that are in the background as, as part of the ceremony. So it really, it's one of those things that you're really happy to be involved. So that's John Tataro, Grant, Grant Pitaro, Natalie Penman, Stella Nolan, Polly Parsons Hills, and Ellie Guste, those are the, those are the kids that are in that. I included this Sergey budget comparison, because I think that it might be interesting, interesting to you. It's interesting to me to look at this as we go through our budget process. And I don't know if, I can certainly answer any questions about this, you know, as we go on. But I just highlighted the base level of Board of Education funding, and then total funding, which would include the monies that the All-Sport Booster Club contributes in multiple different ways. And then, basically, the per pupil expenditure by, by BOE, and also per pupil expenditure, including the private funding. So, you know, again, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about that. Program, I don't know if I've ever talked about here before, but I think it's something that, again, is, should be, is, hopefully is of interest to you. It's, we have a, when I first took over this role as, as Director of Athletics, the one thing that I, I was, I thought about with respect to being the captains is, it's, it's a difficult role to put a young person in, that they're gonna lead their peers. And how do they know how to do it? And who's teaching them how to do it, and who's helping them do it? They all want to do it well, but how do they know what to do? And so, over the years, I'm fortunate to be working with Sandy Workington on this initiative, and we meet with the, with the athletes at least six times each season, and we talk about a, a lot of different issues related to leadership. And this is just a challenge of leadership, it's strong and not rude, and this is just kind of something that we, we talk to them about, and then we have discussion about to start off. But this is what the program really is. It's, it's six sessions, roles and responsibilities, code of conduct, goal-setting and team culture, team dynamic, finding moments, and reflections. So, the finding moments is an exercise where we proactively think about what we do as captains when either a key person gets injured, or there's some discipline situation, or there's something happens that's going to upset the balance of, of team culture. And that's been helpful for us going forward. The team dynamics is, is an exercise where captains realize that they have different people on the team, that they have close relationships with, and that they're really working as a team to be a leader, and there's different, you know, they have, they can reach out to different people, and the sum of the whole will be greater than they could do in. And then lastly, just reflections on their experiences. And then lastly, just reflections on their experiences of leadership. So it's been, it's a very enjoyable program for Sandy and I to work on. And I think that, I hope that we've been able to help the captains in this really difficult role. I mean, when you think of pure leadership, everything that everybody does is so transparent with respect to social media. It just becomes even more difficult for them, you know, to know what to do, to know how to lead or to know what, what are the boundaries of leadership. And so we hope that we give them operational things that they can do. This is one of the, speaking of an operational activity, so this is the Leader to Detractor Scale. And we want all participants, contributors and leaders. And so our goal is to move observers to be participants and detractors to be participants at the very least and maybe participants to be contributors and to get as many leaders and contributors as we possibly can. So again, you know, this is something that kids can hold on to and think about and act on, which, you know, I'm not so sure that, we shouldn't leave it to their, we shouldn't leave leadership to their. Little bit about our coaches. So we have 112 coaching positions. Coaching positions filled with certified teachers. There are 45 of those. The percentage of coaches are certified teachers are 40%. Is a little deceiving because a great many, quite a few of those coaches are coaching multi-sport. So I didn't really take that into consideration here. That's just. Whole idea about where are we going to continue to find coaches? How are we going to continue to find coaches? That. Is a question that troubles me, you know, as I look into the future. So the coaches that we have now, I'd just like to talk a little bit about these coaches and what they were involved with this year. So I think this is, these are teachers that we have who add value, who add a great deal of value to New Canaan Public Schools. Amy Warren is a physical education teacher at SAC. Amy, I think, I hired Amy my first year. So Amy's going into her 20th year teaching. She's the boys, she's the boys coach, has been the boys coach for the last three or four years. And this year she will also be the girls volleyball coach. Now. If you look at, if you look at our volleyball team, the first thing that you would see is A, how much fun they have and how, how much they care about what they're doing. And so the culture there is an extremely positive culture and it's a sport that, you know, in the spring you have baseball, you have lacrosse, you know, talented track athletes, you have golfers, you have tennis players. And so, you know, these are, she's really carved out a niche for volleyball and made it important for the boys to be involved. And a lot of them, you know, are working on their skills even outside of the season. And this year they were in the semifinals of the state. We were winning 13 to 12 in the fifth set, which goes 15 points. And we lost 15 to 13. Team that beat us beat their opponent in the state championship, three straight sets. So we were looking at, we were two points away from probably a state championship volleyball. It's a very successful season nonetheless. Ben Young, one of Penny's favorite, I know. One of my favorites as well. Ben Young is a tremendous asset to New Canaan. You all have read the emails that we get about Ben and I get these frequently during the season about his acts of sportsmanship and things that he does that are, that are really cool. Here's something that he does that I don't know how he thought about this, but this is just. When he started, I think he's been coaching for 15 or 16 years. His first year, he had his captains write down messages, a message to future captains. And he has done that every year that he's been coaching. And the only people that get to read those messages are the captains of the, of the, of the teams. So this is like a legacy of 16 years worth of advice and good wishes. And so, you know, his, he's a, he's a great culture builder and he's the, he's the king of summer camp too, definitely. Kat Munson is an English teacher at the, at New Canaan High School. She's our boys and girls swim and dive coach. Now that's a lot of hours. That's a lot of time, both in her professional role as a teacher and the work that she does for swimming and diving and they're three-time class elder. Chris Silvestri is our assistant football coach. He's the defensive coach. And I talked about how they got themselves, I think, to the state championship this year. But last year we had. The, very beginning of the season, we had our coach step down and Kim Palmer stepped in to be our head coach and Chris volunteered to be the assistant coach. And he would tell you that he doesn't know, I don't know how much he knows about basketball. He knows a heck of a lot about kids. He knows a heck of a lot about coaching. And so I think that the combination of, you know, the head coach and having Chris there has really helped that girls basketball program as I described earlier. Mary Ann Cohen is our throws coach. And we also had a boy who qualified to go to the new balance, National Track and Field Championship past weekend, Javier Soto Perez. Every year she has turned out throwers that are able to excel in these championship situations. So I would ask you, how many students come to New Canaan High School thinking that they're going to be a shot putter, a discus thrower or a javelin? I would say not too many. So she is completely responsible for seeking their interests, for coaching them and for seeing them through and giving them memories that will last them for a lifetime. You know, so I think this, this happens often in athletics where you have pretty much unsung people who are doing this kind of work with young people and they have something that they're passionate about and they instill that passion in young people. So to me, that's, that's the epitome of coaching. Corey Divas and Shana DeLuca are athletic trainers. They're young people. One's been with us for two years, one's with us for three years. I know I talked about this when I'm here and however many years I'm here to talk, talk to you and they're here, I have to say the same thing. They provide tremendous care for our athletes with respect to injuries. They, they do something that they can do because we have the resources to do it. They provide rehab, onsite rehab for kids that are injured, that help them get back to play faster. But they are non-threatening adults in young people's lives. And I think there is a lot to be said for that. They, kids come in, they'll talk to them differently than they'll talk to a coach. Sometimes they find things out that can, that can help us help young people or help us direct young people. There are countless times that they share these stories with me about, you know, things that are, might be going on in a young person's life invaluable, invaluable resources for us as far as. As far as our. All right. Things that you should know about. I get a look at my notes. So we continue to have challenges as far as buses are concerned and everyone else in Fairfield County has the same challenges. Now, some of these challenges that other schools have are going to spill over and affect our game. They're going to affect the starting time of our games. They're going to affect field availability for programs that happen after the high school programs. You know, there's, you'll get a call from athletic director, I can't get a bus till four o'clock. So the game can't, if you can't start, it depends on how far away. It's either a 4:30 or 5:00 start. You know, that pushes everything that was supposed to happen on those fields forward. This is a real issue. I don't know, if I, I wish I had a solution to this. I don't know what the solution is. So we looked at, we looked at May and during the month of May, we had 81 athletic charter. There was 81, 81 times that we needed to transport student athletes. We have a number of different vendors that we use. We use DadCo, but not the DadCo that's here. It's the DadCo AT, which comes out of either Bridgeport or New Britain. So we used that DadCo AT 25 times. We used the school bus 11 times. Roy was gracious enough to allow us to use the special education vans eight times to transport our golf team. So that was 44 times out of 81. The rest of those times, Elite Transportation in Norwalk, we used 26 times. J and R, which is a transportation group down in Mount Vernon, we used seven times. And we used Hoyt four times for golf. So that's 37. So we're a little, probably 55 or 60% of what we do is done with DadCo and the rest we have to outsource. And you know. It's a cost. It's a cost. In addition to that, I was sharing with Jill on the way in. The Tuesday after Memorial Day, we had, our softball team and our baseball team won their state championship. And, which was great news. They, they had traveled for those games. They had to travel for the next game on Wednesday. So when I went to bed on Tuesday night, I did not know how they were getting to the game on Wednesday and didn't know until 10 o'clock on Wednesday how we were going to transport teams to their championship. So it's, it's, it's different than it's been in the past. And we're managing it. You know, my assistant Christina Bell has done a fantastic job. I mean, she's like being, it's like being a travel agent. Make up trips as you go along, but. It's something that we'll continue to work on. I don't know that there'll be any solutions. I don't see what else we can do other than, you know, keep the relationship that we have with these groups and continue to transport our kids. Coach's salaries. I don't know if we've ever, I've never talked about this before. So I don't know how many people are really aware of this, but I think it's, it's important because as we go forward, this may be something that you all will be talking about from a budgetary concern. So I, I use these numbers to approximate what our coaches, how our coaches are paid. First of all, our coaches are paid on a, on a scale that's included in the teacher's contract. So there's, what I'm going to talk about here is class four, there's a certain amount of money, class seven, there's a certain dollar figure that's assigned to these classes. And then it increases on a yearly basis based on the contractual increase that exists in the, the increase that exists in the teacher. So I did an approximation just to give you an idea. So I used 12 weeks. I used 18 hours a week. And so I came up with a number of 260 hours in the course of season. So our assistant coaches. On average, a class four coach is paid $4,100. Class seven coach is paid $7,100. Class eight coach is paid $8,100 before taxes. Class four coach makes $18 an hour. Class seven coach makes $32 an hour and a class eight coach makes $37 an hour. That's without, I didn't, I mean, I would say 70% of that is what they really get, but I don't know that that's true. So I didn't want to take that liberty. But anyway, that's, that's the ref. Now, we are not on the low end. We are not on the high end as far as Fairfield County. We're kind of in the middle. So as I think, as we get into the teacher's contract, this is something that I think is going to be included there as far as, you know, working on this with respect to longevity and working on this with respect to, it's kind of all over the place. It's very old with respect to the value that's given to different sports. So, so for example. Swimming is a seven and soccer is an eight. And there really is no reason for that. You think about their time, they're spending the same amount of time. It's aligned gender-wise, which is good. But it's not a work, it's something that we're going to really need to look at forward. So that's why it's in this category of things you should know. Pool availability. Those of you that frequent the Y, see that there's curtains over one of the, one of the, one of the pools. My understanding is that the work that is going to be done there is going to be going on through October. So we had a meeting, I had a meeting with Ms. Riley and some other folks over there about a couple of months ago. And we're given like half of the, I understand their situation, but we have probably half the pool time that we had last year. Last year, we were cut 15 minutes off of what we had the previous year. So 90 minutes is what you need for an effective swim practice. We have, you know, one of the top swim programs in the state and we have the least amount of pool time for all of these issues. So I'm in the process of trying to figure out where else we can go and get pool time. Kat Munson is the aquatics director at Woodway and she has had conversation with them about continuing to use that facility through September. We would, of course, there'd be a cost associated with that for the propane and so forth, but that might be an option for us through, keep our fingers crossed with the weather through September for the girls. After that, in the month of October, we're just going to have to, I'm still working on what the solution could be for that, but that's going to be Another thing I'd just like to bring to your attention is the popularity of home athletic events. I'll talk particularly about football. And I guess just to put this, put this in context, our first football game last year, 2,379 people came to that game, 624 students came. Now, that's a lot of people. And so it continues to be like that for the rest of the season. Our average home attendance was 1,490 people and our average student attendance, which I think is fantastic, was 461. So five times we had games and you know, that was the kind of attendance. So that's good and I'm, I'm so happy that that situation exists. I guess, I guess I just want to caution about the, the resources that we have to cover those games and do what needs to be done with respect to security and control and keep that to be a safe environment. I just have to be honest about this. We, the days of getting the social studies teacher and supervise at football games, it's over. Bill Tezberg used to do it. He's, he probably is not available these days either. So I guess the model that was, that used to exist where you would just have, ask a teacher and you know, there's, A is between $80 and $100, you know, for the, for the teachers to come and do this or for anybody to come and do it. We struggle every time we have to do it, find people that can help us out with. So again, you know, that's in the category of things I thought, I think that you should know about. The last thing I'm going to talk about has to do with athletic balance. And I'll go through these. And so what I am most proud of as far as our athletic program is concerned is that almost every student, well, we only had one team that didn't qualify for the CIAC playoff. And so every one of those teams that you see up there, you look at their records and you see that young people involved in those programs had meaningful experiences. They had, they had exciting seasons. They had something that they could feel good about and feel valued with respect to their participation. And again, you look at their records, you can pretty much see that there's excitement, again, value and enthusiasm all throughout all of our sports. And you know, that's what we should be all about. And that's what I'm interested in and that's what I am going to say to you that as school leaders, we all have a role in creating an environment that allows all athletes to feel what they are doing is important and valued. Again, except for one sport, our 2023 athletes had the opportunity to participate, all athletes had the opportunity to participate in a CIAC tournament, meet or playoff. What students remember most from their athletic participation are the relationships and the celebrations they share with their teammates. High school athletes work together daily in strenuous practices preparing for stressful situations in search of a positive outcome. In this pressured environment, students build relationships, learn to care for each other and learn to care for each other. These are truly lifelong memories and foster lifelong friendship. That's the work that we are all doing as far as, and you are helping us do as far as athletics concerned. That's what I think mission one and that's what I think, that's what I feel most proud of with respect to our athletic gear. And the last thing that I will say about this, which I feel like I have to say this. This doesn't start in high school. This has to do with, we don't have direct influence on youth sport, but we should know what's going on and we should be aware that everything that any young, any sport that any young athlete wants to participate in, we should find a way to value. participate in, we should find a way to value. In the last ten years, on numerous occasions, I've been called by middle school principals and by elementary principals asking me if we can bring football players or lacrosse players over to talk to the boys in the school about how they treat each other. And if I'm not a football player, what's my value? If I'm not a lacrosse player, what's my value? And those of you, we are all interested in mental health of young people. I would say to you that this should be something that's top of mind for us all. This is a real thing that happens. And it's nobody's fault, nobody's doing it intentionally. But as adults and as leaders, this is something that we have to understand is going on and we have to, we have to work on this in as many ways as we can and whatever influence we possibly have.
Thank you. Any questions for Jay? You go. Oh, I'm sorry, Julie.
So athletics was a big topic when we were discussing start times. What was your experience this year and do you have any feedback?
I think I overestimated the effect it would have on our home game. I moved our home games to four o'clock and I was concerned, as you remember our conversations, I'm concerned about what happens on the other end of, you know, half an hour here is a half an hour, as I mentioned, on the youth sports side. We didn't find that we needed to move our games to four o'clock, or four-thirty. So I've had our games at four o'clock. So with respect to home games, it's been managed. The effect that it's had on us is when we travel outside longer than a half an hour, it's hard for us to get to the four o'clock game. So we try to have early dismissals and we, we learned some things in the fall about early dismissals and then we did no early dismissals for sub varsity programs, only for varsity. And we tried to be very judicious with how we did that. So it hasn't had zero impact, but it hasn't had the impact. I was anticipating a larger impact. I have to say that probably the greatest impact that it has is had is on facilities that are not ours, right? And so that's hot for me. Golf is golf. I mean, three o'clock, you're playing golf at three o'clock and, you know, you better be there or you're not playing and stuff.
You go.
I feel like the swimming situation has been a situation for a while. Like we've had issues, like ongoing issues with pool time. And I know we pay, right? We pay the YMCA some money to do that. How many of the schools in our district have their own pool? Like where I grew up, we had our own, like I feel like most big high schools have their own pools.
Yeah, well, Greenwich has a pool, Staples has a pool. People scramble for pool time. People scramble for pool time. So there's a pool in Trumbull that's at an elementary school. There's a pool in Ridgefield that's at an elementary school. So I think they have, you know, probably preferential access to those facilities. The Danbury I know is at Westcon, so they're at their mercy. And I know the Fairfield schools are, excuse me, West Hill has a pool as well. And the Fairfield, West Hill and Norwalk have pools, Norwalk's a pool. And the Fairfield schools are at Fairfield University. So a half, half, half of the schools probably have.
Have we ever looked at bringing a pool?
I don't want to tell you what happened here because I know we've just refurbished this, but what happened here was in nineteen seventy-four, the big question was, do we have a planetarium or do we have a pool? So we have a planetarium. Just saying. I think it's great, but that's what happened.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? I just had one quick one. The delta between us and our friendly neighbors to the South, is that, is that salaries and what else, what else is kind of going on there? It's a delta of about, you know, probably fifteen percent or so, not insignificant.
In the cost for the program?
I think it's non-CIAC sports that are wrapped into the athletic, but I know that's, I don't know the specifics of it, but I know that that is the difference in there in our business.
These are the club sports? Okay. Thank you.
And I just would like to share before you sit down, Jay, that if you go on the niche.com ratings, which, you know, we like to do sometimes, out of approximately fifteen hundred schools throughout the New York City area, New Canaan High School is rated number nine as the best high schools for athletes in that whole region. But I think even more impressive when they look nationally at twenty-five thousand eight hundred schools, New Canaan High School ranks eighty-two nationally as best high schools in the country for student athletes. But I think says a lot about, I mean, just talk about the size of some of the states and the programs out in California and Texas and Florida and other places, really speaks volumes about the quality of the program that you're leading. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Appreciate that.
All right. So we're going to move on to action items now and we're going to start with the Dunning Stadium enhancements. And I think that's Mike Benevento from the New Canaan Athletic Foundation.
Sure. And I shared the presentation. Should be able to get that up and going. If it doesn't work right away, just let me know. And while Mike is preparing, I want to just start by saying thank you, Mike, for coming to the Board of Education tonight. As many of us know, all of us know, the New Canaan Athletic Foundation began in twenty nineteen and started in its mission to raise funds and develop our facilities to really make sure they remain and even improve as world-class facilities for our kids and for our community. Mike has been the point person of the NCAF since its inception, was at the table as it was all put together and has really done a wonderful job working with the community, with me, with us, with Jay, with our athletics program, with the town, in order to keep that mission going and strengthen it year after year after year. So as part of the NCAF agreement, any projects on Board of Education property, of which Dunning is, comes before the board for approval. Mike's not here asking for funding for this project. The funding is both private and publicly raised. I know the, and Mike is probably one of the busiest guys in town, having gone to about every town meeting of boards since the budget season began. And I know that because I've seen him at all of them. So I was, felt a little guilty asking to put one more meeting on his calendar with us tonight. But it's the first large-scale project that we'll be doing under our NCAF agreement, which I think is very exciting, be able to get things rolling and to have this conversation. So I did share all three of the presentations. There's a PowerPoint in there and then these other slides. So glad to help if you need on the computer, but if you've got it, it's all yours, Mike. And thank you again for being here with us.
Thanks. Thanks for having me. I think, so I did, I included the presentation that we did in front of the Board of Finance back in April, which has a lot of renderings and information in it, specific to what we would come to the Board of Ed for, projects that are happening on Dunning Stadium property, including naming, there's a donor wall, which is the rendering up here. So there will be names of our private donors that have supported the Athletic Foundation in the public-private partnership that is the New Canaan Athletic Foundation. So we would have to ask for approval of that as part of our memorandum of understanding. And so, and then there's also the actual rendering of what the entrance way and donor wall will look like. So I think that's what I'm here asking for permission for. I'm happy to most, I'm really happy just to answer any questions. I can give you all a bit of history in the Athletic Foundation if anybody's interested. I know most of you, this has been around for a while. You may ask, why is this guy sitting here? And I oftentimes ask myself that question. But I'm happy to give you a little bit of background as to why I undertook this or why I was asked to undertake it back in twenty sixteen. And so if it's helpful for this board, the Athletic Foundation was started in the summer of twenty sixteen, somewhat informally. There had been something prior to that called the Ram Spirit Fund, which was a fund that was used to generally raise private dollars for facilities, to enhance facilities. And the history of Dunning Stadium specifically, when it was built, which you probably all know, was it was approved as a project, but it was also approved with the caveat that no public funds from either the Board of Ed or the town of New Canaan would go in to support that facility. It would have to be one hundred percent supported by private dollars. In the summer of twenty sixteen, June specifically, we had a meeting of the Ram Spirit Fund or the loosely formed prior to the Athletic Foundation where Jay was kind enough to join us. And there was a request made because it was right after Dunning Stadium, the surface had failed a Gmax test, which is the, basically the safety of the surface. It was well beyond at that point its useful life. And the request was, because I think Jay was in a little bit of a pickle because he couldn't ask for public funds, given the doctrine of the way Dunning Stadium was formed. And we basically needed seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in two weeks. Otherwise, Dunning Stadium was going to be condemned and you weren't going to be able to play sports on it in the fall of twenty sixteen. And so a, my background was, I'm an emeritus member of the Athletics Board at Bucknell University. I also had friends that had started the Athletic Foundation at Darien, the Darien Athletic Foundation. So I had a decent sense of how this infrastructure and some institutional knowledge as to what makes these things work, public-private partnerships. The person that was willing to come forward and give a large chunk of that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars was needed, said, I'm happy to do this. I will establish an anchor tenant in raising these funds, but I won't do this unless you're in charge. And that's why I'm sitting here. In two weeks, we did raise seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We ripped and replaced the surface at Dunning Stadium. It was ready for fall sports, for all the sports that took place. And then we said, we kind of have something here and let's formalize the New Canaan Athletic Foundation. Let's come up with a mission statement and let's create a master plan for things that we want to do on a bigger, larger scale to develop and enhance existing athletic foundation or athletic facilities. Our mission statement, it's longer than what I'm going to say, but it's what I hold true by is, we are all sports and community. That's it. I don't represent football, soccer, lacrosse, field hockey. We are all sports. In fact, when we did the big project in twenty seventeen, which included a complete rebuild of the Water Tower One turf, the building of Water Tower Two and Three turf, and a repeat, a complete rip and replace of the six-lane track into an eight-lane track with a grandstand seating capacity. You know, that track, for the most part, gets used by community members outside of, you know, the track and field athletes that use that facility. So we get a lot of feedback from people that say, wow, the track is an amazing thing. Community members that, you know, don't have kids in school, haven't had kids in school in years, but they loved that we have this facility. So that was about a six million dollar project. That was a public-private partnership between the town and the private dollars that came in from the Athletic Foundation, which was roughly three million. The other thing that we did at that time was say, okay, we need to create, we'd like to create a master plan so that we can look at the facility. The luxury that I think we have here at New Canaan is the luxury of a campus. Quite frankly, I love what Darien has done down there. I won't say it too publicly, but in my opinion, Darien has stuffed a couple of turf fields into a parking lot. And, you know, they're nice, but it's, they just don't have the luxury of having a campus like we do. We can do a lot because we have some flexibility of land, quite frankly. So we established a master plan in that same timeframe. And then we also legally established a public-private partnership with the town of New Canaan, the Board of Education and the Athletic Foundation, where Dr. Lettsi and I and Kevin Moynihan worked on a memorandum of understanding that was about a year's worth of work that we officially signed, I think in November of twenty nineteen. As part of that MOU, and it's part of the reason why I'm here, we need to come forward and ask for permission for things like naming rights or when facilities are done on campus. So I feel really good about that public-private partnership. I think that the town representatives feel really good about that triple P because there's been, it's been a good example of how public-private partnerships can work well. In the town of New Canaan, there have been others. The library is a great example. The conservancy is a great example. These things work. There's a lot of generosity in this town that people want to come forward and give private donations to enhance and build things that are already great. In some cases, we just want to make them better. But again, our mission is all sports and community. And so we're, what we're doing now is executing on that master plan. One of the big things, the first thing to come with that master plan was enhancing the Dunning Stadium facility. It's, I think, the most amazing facility in the state of Connecticut. You know, it's, when I go around to a lot of places in the country and I see other facilities, it's incredible. But it hasn't been touched in thirty years, quite frankly, other than ripping and replacing the surface. So we looked at it and we said, okay, we'd like to do a couple of things. Number one, we want to recognize our donors. We'd like to have a donor wall for the people that have supported the Athletic Foundation. That came with a new entrance way to Dunning. And then the other piece is the press box. And I heard Jay talk a lot about it. I think that what we think is an incredible piece and what's happened in athletics is people supporting athletics that are, in some cases, non-athletes. So you look at what the Darien Athletic Foundation has done with DAF Media and, you know, I hear comments all the time about grandparents being able to watch streamed games of their grandkids in Florida while they're going. And we thought about the press box and an enhancement of the press box was really just an extension of the high school and the school system to become a working classroom because there's so many kids that are involved in, again, around athletics, but maybe not competing on the field. So part of this is also doing, the first stage in doing this Dunning enhancement is to do the donor wall and the press box. That's what we went to the town with at the beginning of January. I've presented to Sluckman, Parks and Rec, Board of Finance four times, five times maybe, Town Council. And the net of all that is that they have approved, the town has approved a two million dollar contribution, matching effort to two million dollars that the Athletic Foundation will come forward with. The first stage of that massive Dunning renovation will be this donor wall and the press box. There are other iterations that we broke the project up into, including additional bathrooms, an additional concession stand that would basically service both sides, both the inner side of Dunning and then the outside into the water tower turf areas. And think about, we've thought about it in design work around, like a mead park setting, where you'd have a park setting and be able to have food facilities that would face outwards toward those other fields, a storage facility on the visitor's side of the Dunning Stadium with also additional bathrooms. So it's a big project. I don't know that it will all get done. It was, like I said, broken up into four different layers, but the first of which, it's roughly a ten million dollar project, the first of which is this four million dollar project, which the Athletic Foundation is coming forward with two million and the town has matched two million. So that's what we're here for. I'm happy to continue to answer as many questions as you need. But what you're looking at up here is like an architectural rendering of the donor wall. And I should say that this is a project that's gone on from a design standpoint for the better part of over a year. There's been some delays here and there. There might be some supply chain issues with actually getting the press box up and running by what we were hopeful for this summer. That won't happen this summer. It will likely be shortly after the fall sports season this year. But that's the architectural drawings of the donor wall. This is a fancier picture of what the outside of, and the new entrance way and ticket booth and donor wall will look like at Dunning Stadium. So you can see just to the left is the existing entrance way. This would be slightly to the right if you were facing the existing entrance way. There's a new ticket booth there, swing gate, and then on the left is the donor wall that we've talked about. And this would provide sort of a new entrance way to Dunning. I won't go through the entire presentation to the Board of Finance, but it is here. And part of what I wanted to show here is it just gives good renderings for, this is the entire master plan site. So as we look at the entire campus, when we developed a master plan, there's also plans for a new varsity baseball stadium up at the Capo Field area. Everything within those black lines is what we defined in the master plan, the initial master plan. master plan. This is stuff that is not as interesting. Oh, I did, I'm sorry, I did page when I meant to do just one down. So yeah, there's that. And then this is the areas that we're talking about touching initially. That's the entranceway. This is, again, the other buildings, the new press box, some of the concessions. This will all be phased in over four years, I believe, is what they talked about. This is the same thing, concession stands. This is, this is traffic information. We're not doing this this summer, this year, so probably not relevant to this discussion. This is the same rendering you saw before. Again, this was like, this was the original plan for the press box. This looks really big. I can tell you, for a whole host of reasons, mostly because it's two floors today and elevator requirements, we value engineered this down to a single-story, which I think you see at some point. That's, you know, the initial two-story one. And some of this design on the press box is still a little bit fluid. I think Jay and I and others, Roman Sobolski, we've talked about how, what this is ultimately going to look like. We're pretty deep on design, but because we haven't signed a contract yet for actual construction, there's still the ability to shift some things around. But the idea of an enhanced press box is, I think, pretty, yeah. As you can see, we had an original two-story plan, and then these are just architectural things. Anyway, that's, I could show you all the details. Like I said, we're not doing all this this summer, even in calendar 23, so it's less relevant for this discussion and this ask, but I figured I would give you some background. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Mike? Seeing none? Oh, sorry, Bob. Go ahead.
Thanks, Mike. Just on the, on the plan for the, on the out-years, is it like you're looking for $1 million town, $1 million NCAF for the next few years? Is that, is that what this?
For the, for the out-years, we're not looking for or doing anything from a presentation standpoint. None of that has really been decided. We just have a pretty good sense of what it's going to cost today. When we made the ask to the town for what do you want to get done this year, it was, "We can come forward with $2 million. We'd like a match on that." The precedent has been kind of a 50-50 partnership. You know, I get a lot of traction and a lot of success with private donations when they feel like they're giving a 50 cent dollar. But there's no hard and fast rule that, you know, we give 50% and the town gives 50%. It's, every project is sort of done on a one-off basis.
Got it. Any other questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Erica.
I was wondering, Mike, if you could talk a little bit about the decision to bring forward the donor wall and the press box as the current phase. And then I just wanted to clarify that you're asking for approval for that phase and that you would be back for additional phases, or are you asking for approval for the master plan?
So I'll answer the second one first. And we're only asking tonight for permission for the donor wall and press box, because that's the only thing that is ready to be full go. The other stuff, and there were multiple iterations as to what Town Council was looking for, Board of Finance, Parks and Rec, others, as to what the other phases would look like. The best way to think about this is, we started with a donor wall and a press box, because that's really where we had momentum from the Athletic Foundation. Quite frankly, the donor wall is the most important thing. There's people that have been massively generous, even with our previous project where, you know, $3 million and then $750 for the rip and replace of Dunning, where we just felt like they needed to be recognized. And when we talked about where the best place would that, you know, for that would be, obviously at Dunning Stadium was, made the most sense. It's the most traffic, the most use. That iterated into, well, if we're going to touch that, what else are we going to do at Dunning to enhance that facility? It's the crown jewel of the town. And then that morphed into the press box. And then we started talking about, you know, concessions and multiple bathrooms and extra storage space. And so what we did was, and this is really the whole purpose of the Athletic Foundation, is to listen to what our constituents want and look for. And we gave all that information to Richter and Seegan and our design people. And as you would expect, they came back with the Cadillac. And we said, "That's great. We love the Cadillac. We can afford the Honda." And so, but they, what was really helpful and really smart, and I think what the town appreciated, we paid for those plans and gifted them and said, "Okay, this is what Dunning Stadium and the surrounding area could look like." And I think the Board of Finance and others said, "Okay, that's great. Let's break this up into pieces. Let's try to see how it fits into the town budget and what we're doing." And the ultimate, and there's lots of reasons why it has to be broken up into pieces. There's site work that has to be done, that, you know, before other pieces can fall into place, and you don't want to disrupt certain areas and then have to disrupt it again. And so, we were really thoughtful about all that stuff. And then it basically got broken up into four segments. And the only one that I'm concerned about right here, right now, is Phase One. And if Phase Two, Three, and Four get done, that will be great. We'll all be better off for it. Hopefully, I won't be the person that's parading around doing it, but, you know, who knows? I said that four years ago also, and I'm still here.
Well, and how I understand the project, this phase really sets you up for those next phases. Right? So moving the entrance sets you up for the concessions, sets you up for the, that campus feel. And then, of course, the press box, which everyone who uses the field can take advantage of.
And you're exactly right. And the reason it's $4 million, it doesn't cost $4 million to build a press box necessarily, or even a donor wall. It does cost $4 million to do sewage work, telecom, you know, all the gross, ugly stuff that you don't want to do. But if you're going to start at the press box and work out towards the road, all that stuff needs to get done first. And so, you know, like it or not, it costs a bunch of money. And so, we will be, but again, I go back to the, you know, the slide that I put up there about thinking about this in a master plan type of way. This is even a master plan within a larger master plan. So, we've tried to create institutional infrastructure at the Athletic Foundation, so that the public-private partnership and the plans, you know, live well beyond me or the people that are involved today, that it can actually be in existence, so others can take it and move it forward without some individual, you know, pushing forward on a single agenda. And then you have starts and stops. And so we've really tried to be thoughtful about how we think about master planning for all facilities.
Thank you. And just following up on that, I appreciate that there's the site work that's kind of a setup for potential other phases. But I just wanted to confirm that doing this work now, the donor wall and the press box, that we're not going to lose any functionality in between that phase and any future phases that are in the master plan, but are not happening at this time. So we'll be able to do the press box, the site work, the donor wall, and still have full functionality until a future phase arrives.
I think that's 100% right. In fact, one of the reasons why we delayed the press box, and one of the things that we're trying to, the work is always easiest to get done during the summer. The donor wall is not a huge project. It can lightly fit in that window. Press box, a different story. And if we weren't able to have that up and running and ready to go by football season, which, you know, a month ago, we knew that it wasn't going to be available, we were likely going to have to do that after the fall sports season. But Jay rightfully and thoughtfully said, "Okay, but what about graduation 2024?" Because that's when we really need that stuff to work, the PA system and everything. And can we work back off that timeline? And our people, the design team, everybody feels pretty confident in that. But we do think a lot about making sure that we don't have to take stuff offline, and we're not too disruptive to things that have to and will go on on a day-to-day basis.
Great. Thank you.
Brendan, do you have a question? Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just, I was just going to ask if, I'm, you know, obviously very thankful for all that you, Mike, and the community and the NCF have done over the years. So, first, thank you. Second, on the donor wall, are we going to have kind of final sign-off of what actually goes on the donor wall? Just thinking about things like, you know, we don't want it to be a bunch of commercials, you know, that type of thing, which I'm sure it's not going to be. But I guess that's just one question that I have as to what ultimately is going to be there.
Yeah, I think that, first of all, you, as per the MOU, the Board of Ed is one of those three signers, and I believe even Town Council has final say as to what will go on there, or approval of what it will look like. There was a, trying to think where they, I did have renderings of what part of it looked like today. The, the short answer is, it's really just names of people. There's not going to be organizations. There's going to be, you know, bronze plaques. That's it there. Right? Thank you, Brian. So, it's really just, there are some categories.
Yeah, I saw that.
Right. But, but it's just names of peoples. And in fact, there's also, you know, the current bricks that are in the stadium, the current donor wall that exists in the existing entry. All of that stuff will also be repurposed. So it's not as though, when we disrupt this area, that we're just, you know, going to be rid of the other recognition pieces, because they, we are having those incorporated into this whole area as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve enhancements to Dunning Stadium, including a new entryway, donor wall, and press box, as presented by the New Canaan Athletic Foundation and scheduled to begin this summer? Hugo? Second? Julie? All in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
One and done with the Board of Ed, Mike. Well done.
Thank you.
Okay, next action item is a donation from the Dome. I think that's Sarah Schubert. I don't know if she's coming up, or...
Oh, yeah.
She is coming up. Okay.
Yes. I want to just say a quick word of thanks to Sarah and to everyone who has been so engaged in the Dome Committee. It's hard to believe, it's about a year, right? Just about. Yeah. But to see and to reflect on all of the work that was done over the course of this last year to make this happen. So, to say thank you to Sarah, I just was looking back through some of my things and even remembering some of the marketing, some of the communications, the outreach that this group did, and the many different ideas that came forward. And Sarah, the, lots of incredibly talented people in the room, but they needed a leader. And you stepped forward and organized and motivated and kept things moving, and it wouldn't have happened without you. So, thank you.
I'm grateful to be here. So thank you. A few minutes, but this is the fun part, obviously, at the end. While I appreciate they left, I appreciate a good pool. However, now we're going to turn into academic, where you can enter a classroom and be transported anywhere in the world or out of the world, as the case may be. So, I do want to thank you all for your support. Obviously, this is an opportunity to say thank, but the support, this has been more than that. It's been more than 14 months. It's been five years in the making. And that's thanks to Dr. Letzey, keeping this moving forward in our, in the agenda and the priorities for the district, and constantly pushing us onward. So, Dr. Letzey, your vision and commitment, keeping New Canaan moving forward, in this case, in lightning speed, a little tight timeline here, is nothing short of inspiring. So, thank you. And we all, you know, turned up all the time and raised the bar to try to meet yours. So, you started the project initiating, we've heard about public-private partnerships tonight, and you initiated that with the town. And along with the board and your commitment, assembled the committee. And when we nearly equalized what they contributed, you went back and said, "You know what? Let's figure out how to make this a little easier," and added the bulk of the remaining into the operational year. So we obviously appreciate that. Without that example of partnership, we would not be able to achieve the goal that was set before us in the time we did. So, working with the district and each school, while keeping our ever-present goal in mind, my requests were often numerous and relentless, and inevitably at the last minute. So, I wanted to thank everyone in the district who, at the very last minute, said yes and helped out, pitched in with a smile and with a can-do attitude. I want to just give a few shout-outs to Dr. Letzey for your support, Matt Salvastini, Melinda Meyer, Michael LaDuke, administration from each school has been amazing and supportive, especially Bill, who tolerated my presence in the high school more often than he probably wanted to. And he was ready to say sure to absolutely anything I asked, as long as I could get his boss to approve it. And Dave, across the street, must have mentioned it in every other email, post, blog that he did all year long, to support. So, I'm very pleased with all the support. Michelle Ahmed is absolutely amazing, and thank goodness she came back after maternity, because I don't think I'd be standing before you right now, having achieved all of this without her. And Zach Woodlock cannot even begin to express how grateful I am for having had the opportunity to work with him. His expertise and passion for this project knew no bounds. Absolutely anything, even attacked with 20 minutes' notice for a crazy idea. And he was all over it. He said, "Anything we needed." He was dependable, knowledgeable, witty, and always happy to help. The PFAs and the PTCs for being ambassadors and keeping the Dome ever-present in their newsletters. The New Canaan High School copy center for professional and family flyers and posters. We received support from our community. We received generous grants from the Rotary Club and the New Canaan Community Foundation. And in addition to the over 400 private donors who invested in the New Canaan Public School System and students. We, let's see, donors range from current families to alumni, past and present New Canaanites, grandparents and staff members. True collaborative effort was made to make this happen. And every single dollar is going towards the goal of having this academic, amazing facility right here in the high school. This work took many volunteers from our community, and I'm extremely grateful to each and every one. I would be here all night if I'm listing them all, so, and I don't want to forget anyone, so I'm just going to give a shout-out to a few. I would be remiss if I didn't take a minute to thank my committee. They are amazing. From the very beginning, we had their collective brain power, talents, financial support, and dedication. Our BSR campaign chairs, Cara Gillum, Stacy Murphy, and Julie Passios. Jane Benton and Janet Lee, who spearheaded numerous events and to educate and spread the word. Our dynamic development team, Jill Carles, Lauren Erickson, Megan Gould, Carrie Kurtz, and Elizabeth Demuth, who had endless ideas in how to engage new donors and to get in and join us in the Dome. Our marathon marketing team, Jen Lattick, researched and wrote multiple grants. Kara Homan, our graphic designer. Lauren Nussbaum, our social media guru. Lydia Kramer, our website junior. And last but certainly not least, two of your very own, Erica Schwedell and Katrina Parkville, who's not here now, whose steadfast stewardship of this project knew no bounds. Day and night, weekends, and even over the holidays, they were ever-present, responsive, creative, and encouraging, and dedicated to this vision. I have thoroughly enjoyed working with you both and with this committee. It's hard to believe we started this journey 14 months ago. The task set upon us was short and daunting, and each one of these warrior women rolled up their sleeves and showed up time and time again throughout the process. Attended hours of meetings, had countless conversations with potential donors, handwrote thank you notes to each and every one, and every advocated for this academic achievement and advancement. This group has been impressive, and I would welcome the opportunity to work with them in the future. What a gift the Dome will be for our district and our community. Thanks to you all for prioritizing education and innovation and the latest in technology for our district. And the Dome will inspire countless young students, teachers, and staff, and community members of all ages for generations to come. So, thank you for the honor and privilege of being a part of it.
Thank you, Sarah. Any questions or comments for Sarah? Okay, with that, I'd like...
Huge thank you to you and your entire team. I'm sure everybody on the board would all want to say that. So, thank you.
So with that, can I get a motion to approve a donation from the Dome Committee in the amount of $350,000 via the New Canaan Community Foundation? Erica? Second? Penny? All in favor? And Brendan, I believe, is offline, so...
Thank you. Approved.
It's mostly unanimous. Approved. Thank you, and congratulations. Okay, next up on the action items is a donation from the East School PTC.
I can speak to this briefly. Glad to answer any questions you have. But it is continuing the work in the Outdoor Learning Center over at East. We had a chance to tour that not all too long ago. This is to continue in those phases to specifically...
This is to continue in those phases to specifically put in some science area tabletops, a traversing wall, and then a price increase that they're absorbing of a little over $100. So these are, this is the next phase of the work that they're doing over there. As you know, they are similarly to West, creating an area outside using the courtyard that has specific learning stations throughout, multiple classes can use it at the same time. And they're also looking at, again, that science piece with the science tables and then a traversing wall for students to be able to go out there and to use during the school. Very cool stuff. And because it is over $5,000, it comes to the board for approval in advance.
Can I get a motion to approve a donation from the East School PTC in the amount of $8,286 for the Outdoor Learning Center? Bob, second? Penny? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Last action item, contract signature authorization.
Yes, I can speak to this briefly, more if, if you'd like, but the, we began doing this with Nancy Harris back in 2015, and we've done this ever since. It's, we do have a policy, 3300, that does authorize the Superintendent and the Director of Finance and Operations to sign on the board's behalf. I believe in conversation back with Nancy and then with Dr. Keating after that, they felt that it was good to have this on the record annually, so we began doing it. I don't believe there's more of a purpose than that, other than to have it approved in the minutes each year as we, as we go through. It is for signing contracts, it's for financial transactions and things, and, you know, part of us fulfilling our role as CEO and Director of Finance and Operations for the district.
Sorry, Penny.
Happy to move it?
Oh.
No comment.
Any comments or questions? Bob?
So, so this one's come up a few years, and I appreciate the language change because the language in the previous years was like very broad, right? This is more in line with what I think, I think the spirit of it was, but not what it said. And so that's really good. And, you know, I, I don't know if it makes sense to reference the policy, like in accordance with policy 3300 or something to that effect? If that, if that does, would, you know, would that work? I mean, this is, this is even narrower than the policy.
Sure.
So I don't know if it makes sense to just reference the policy in there in accordance with-
Certainly could, if, if you felt more comfortable. Wouldn't, doesn't change things on our end.
Yeah, that way it's clear.
Mm-hmm. So just add that to the, to the end, in accordance with policy 3300.
Is that all right?
Sure. Yeah, as far as I, as far as I know, it doesn't change.
Okay. I don't know, we have, we didn't, we checked, I don't even know if we- Probably just amended.
I don't think it was seconded.
It was seconded. You can just re-motion it.
Mm-hmm.
You okay with that, Penny?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So I'll make the motion. So motion, Brian Letzey, Superintendent of Schools, and Sean O'Keefe, the Director of Finance and Operations, to sign contracts on the behalf of the Board of Ed, effective July 1 through June 30, 2024, in accordance with policy 3300.
Penny? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay, and the second report's in recognition. I think that's the first time I've-
Yeah, we adjust things.
Okay, it's a Finance Department update from Sean.
Yes, a very short update, but we're just finishing up the May statement of accounts. And as we've reported over the last several months, we're continuing to track right where we were a year ago in May. All indications are we're going to land in several weeks within budget. So with about 11 days to go, still have a lot of balls on the air, but we're going to monitor every day, and we're closing out purchase orders quickly. And once again, I think we'll be within budget.
Right, and I'm just briefly going to add, so as, as you know, when we move into this phase of the year, this is the busiest time for our Finance Department because they're working at closing out the prior year's budget and then preparing for the audit and continuing to work with the auditors and do those closeouts. So because of that, we've talked with Bill Ossman and looked at the move to 220, and we're going to make sure we time that so it's not disruptive to their, their work. Because it will look at a quick switch over, perhaps over the weekend. We've learned to do a lot of this work at home, you know, because of what, where we are and what, what we've experienced the last couple of years. So if need be, the Finance Department can, we'll, we'll make sure they can continue doing their work in order to hit those deadlines. September 1 is a hard deadline in the state that all school districts have to hit, have, have the books closed and be done, or there's a significant fine that gets levied daily against districts, and they do fine them. So we'll make sure we hit that date with plenty of time to spare.
Just as part of the Finance update, I know there was some, I don't know if, I don't remember, remember if it was Board of Finance, but I was just wondering on the ISF stuff, if, where that netted out.
It's, it was Board of Finance, and there was some conversation about it. And I've got, it's going to take a little time and thought to really summarize it well, but at the long and short of it was, or is, the, the Board of Education's fully funded for the requests that we made in the budget appropriation process. The Board of Finance has made the decision not to allocate the, the 60%. So they're not allocating that currently. They're saying that if there was a need, that they would make us hold, do what they had to do in the short term. They are, this fund is going to remain separate and independent, so the Board of Ed will continue to run its ISF, and the town will run its, and then we're going to continue to look at it and talk about it. Definitely will get to more detail, but just at a high level.
Yeah, yeah, so there was no, there was, I mean, I watched the meeting, but there weren't any surprises. Didn't feel like-
There weren't. And actually, I've been in conversation with the Chair of the Board of Finance about a, a good pathway forward, and I think we found it. We've got to hammer out some specifics, but I think we're on a good path to get to a place where we'll have a long-term solution. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Comments from the public? To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum 15 minutes to each, each subject. Would anyone like to address the board at this time? Seeing no one, we'll move on, announcements and future business.
Sure. So we, we have a brief respite here as a Board of Ed as we get into the summer. So our next meeting will be Monday, July 17. At that meeting, we'll be looking at our goals for our first reading. We'll go through the results around the healthier school start times, feedback that we received. And again, we'll be very, very close to our relocation over at 220. Well, our goal is to get the Board of Ed copies of the first reading of the goals well in advance of that meeting, so at least to give you a week or so to take a look at them as we get into it. And again, the, the healthier start times, we'll be able to, go through some of those data. We may have some other presentations that we add. Just have to loop back to the presenters, make sure they're going to be available. So we'll give you a heads-up about that in advance. Thanks.
That's it. Can I get a motion to adjourn? You go, second? Penny? All in favor? Awesome. See you, guys.